Well, hello.
Hello.
And welcome to the Board of Audit meeting for the March of March. At this time, we're going to prepare ourselves, stand our feet for our invocation which will be done by Reverend Ebert of Jonathan of the Fellowship of Cumberland Presbyterian Church here in our city at 2855 Washington Street.
Father, we just thank you for your presence with us. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together to tend to business concerning Camden, Arkansas. Lord, we know that today there's much confusion and chaos and things woeing on in our nation. We just ask that you will bring wisdom to us, that you will bring wisdom to this place, that there will be wisdom to know what we need to do in the hours in which we are living. Lord, be what their decision made here tonight, give them wisdom, even if they don't realize it's coming from you. Father, I ask that you would just give us those things we need.
Yes.
And Lord, if there's a pandemic of this virus, we just ask that you would make it go away from here, just make it go away from Camden, Arkansas. Lord, give us peace, give us security, and give us peace and placement of understanding that our health is secure in you. Father, we just ask that you will speak to this meeting tonight, the clarity. That the words bind out from the meditations of our heart be acceptable in your sight. Oh, Lord, I'm walking out through you, to the precious name of Jesus that we pray.
Will you please remain standing quiet?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Man. At this time, we're going to pass our secretary's please, your lord.
Lindsey?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Simmons?
Here.
Askew?
Here.
Gilbert?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Arden?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
May your light.
Thank you so much. I hope you've had an opportunity to consider our minutes for tonight. So, we have a motion on the floor. So, as we move then probably second votes in favor of these voters on the eye, votes opposed, votes on the plate. Eyes have it tonight. So, we also have before you our financial report. Is there a motion to approve your test?
I'll make motion to approve.
Second. We move then probably second.
Got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Motion, huh? So, I'm curious about a couple of things. One, we're only into two months of reporting now, but noticing that the fire department, the overtime is already at 25% of the year. I'm just curious if there's what's run that up, or we have a lot of fires, or?
We've had a couple of fires. The chief, active chief is not here. Could you press on time of service addressing the issue?
I'm just curious, if we're running that much over after two months, what will the end of the year apply? So, be a problem.
Well, we've been short four people. And with the chief, we're short a ten. And so, that's kind of the causes of having to have some overtime issues where we wouldn't necessarily have to. That's basically why we're running at 25%. We've been running short in it for about the last three years. That's basically.
Okay. So, you know, I guess what I would ask, is there anything we can do to, so that it doesn't keep any personal activity from the prison?
I think selecting a chief.
Testing again next month also.
Would help, one. And we have been, we've had people fail the test, and we've not been able to get any passers. And we've offered the test, this is the second time we've known passing. Did we get?
We have one in the previous.
The last time? Okay. We have none this time.
But this last time, there was nobody, and then it's set up again for sometime next month.
So, fill the chief's spot.
If you fill the chief's spot, that will help.
Change that, okay.
On top.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right. Now, the questions. There's a favor of both times, right?
Aye.
So, it's both yous both side of the net. And this time, we're going to prepare for audience participation. All right?
Rochelle's the only one who signed up.
Ms. Rochelle Williams is going to come for audience participation.
Rochelle Williams, 212 Parker Avenue. And I basically just have a question. When the entertainment district was pulled, it was stated that it would be revisited, rewritten, compromised, and reintroduced. When is that going to happen, because it's been months?
It will, I'm working with a group of people right now. I'm trying to schedule another meeting with them. It's hard getting a bunch of people's schedules to land together, but I am working on it. We already had a couple of meetings about it and with various people, and it will probably, it'll probably be a few more months, but I gave my word that I would bring it back.
Okay. My one question. Thank you. Let me say that whenever someone addresses the debts of the, in this particular portion, it's reserved for me to respond or to designated to respond. So, when they're talking from there for audience participation, those remarks are to the mayor. And so, I'll respond or give them an opportunity to do so. At this time, we're preparing for the mayor's report, and the biannual water and sewer report will be done by David Richardson as the Camden Water Utilities Manager.
Mayor Council, good afternoon. As indicated in your package, there's a photograph there that reflects that our water sales and our meter accounts are slowing down. We feel like the water sales is down due to the fact that we had an extremely wet summer last year. Usually, we have some pretty dry weather in the summer, and that's when we generate quite a bit of water, the plant, and this past year it just didn't happen. So, we hope that this year maybe just a little bit drier, a little bit drier, generates a little more revenue. Financial status of Camden Water Utilities is sufficient to meet our financial obligations. With some improvements being completed and other plans being scheduled, our second five year thing on our 20-year master plan, we validate our water sewer infrastructure is still being engineered. We expect the planning and engineering to take the rest of the year, and then hopefully by year 2021, solicit bids for that. We've stalled on this, and that is because of unexpected costs at the wastewater treatment plant, which cost us in the amount of $350,000, which I'll explain a little bit later in my report. In the water plant, we continue to make improvements to our drainage system at the wastewater treatment plant, which gives us better communication between the water plant and water tanks. And the plant continues to meet its compliance with ADH, with no violations occurring since my last report. The water distribution, Country Club Water Tank's been painted inside and out at a cost of approximately $350,000. This is part of the five-year program to have all tanks painted inside and out by the year of 2021, per an agreement with the Arkansas Department of Health. We're in planning stages of having Mount Holly and the water road exterior painted this year. We should be on the contract by the end of the year. The only other tank left after that completion will be Cleveland Tank, which will be painted inside and out in 2021. Continue to work on a meter replacement program. We're scheduling to replace approximately 600 this year of radio re-meters. This addition, we should have about half of our system done with radio reads, and we hope to have this completed by the year end of 2022. We have made some improvements to the Atlantic County Drive Booster Station there by installing new breakers, panels, wires, and pumps. We've been having some issues there, a couple of months there, so we've gone ahead and changed all that out to just, of course, when summer gets here, we'll continue to do our clearing, we're clearing the broadways included areas. Our annual system flush is scheduled for March 30th and will last until April 3rd. We have posted this notice on two months of water bills. We posted it on Facebook, and we'll do that again right before we start doing that, doing our flush. We will send out a film read the last full week in March, and customers should be, kind of avoid washing clothes during that week, but we won't have things kind of stirred up during that time. At our wastewater treatment plant, on October 21st, operators at the wastewater treatment plant attended the pool and put back on line, used clarifier after conducting an annual cleaning inspection of the unit. Once the water was introduced to the clarifiers, operators noticed that the metal structure in the 70-foot diagonal tank started rising approximately two foot. The tank drained immediately, investigated, revealed that the clarifier had lifted, or the metal work in the clarifier had lifted up approximately two feet. Engineers called in on that evening and further investigation. After further investigation, I declared that this was an emergency and we need to solicit bids immediately. We did receive two bids, with the low bidder deemed RVIS from Texarkana at a bid price of $292,968. And we did expect some change orders to happen because we didn't have a clue what was going on underneath the concrete that had busted up. But we expected at that time the cost could go as high as $350,000. After demolition had been done, we now realized that that cost is going to be more like $400, due to some metal structure that needed to be replaced, be the rust and deterioration. And then they went ahead and decided that we could sandblast, prime the tank, all the metal structure, which is going to kick that up another $50,000, so total cost is about $400,000. After this unit was, after the demolition of the unit, we determined that the floor was under stress as a result of a recent rainfall that had collected under the clarifier, putting pressure on the floor of the new clarifier. When the water was introduced to the clarifier, trapped to be debris, then the piping was forced to the top, where it suddenly came to a stop, which created a water hammer at that point. With the added pressure on the floor as a result of eight floor valves failing, the floor began to break and start to live. Construction and repairs of this unit are still ongoing. We should have about another month to go before it's ready to put back on the line. Of course, it's standard protocol that anytime there's a disaster such as this, we do a thorough investigation with engineers and management, myself, and the operators concerned with what happened and what can be done to prevent this from happening, and we'll establish a policy procedure for putting this unit back online, which we already have one, but we'll make improvements after this event. Of course, the plant continues to meet its compliance with ADQ. In the wastewater distribution, the mechanical out of Evanui, Arkansas, near completion of replacing Omega, Ross Creek, and Mathis Sewer Lift Stations, a total cost of $206,000. As mentioned in my last report, construction of the new sewer main will require Good Game and Mount Holly's to help drain the sewer in the Fairview area is under construction by Campco Construction at a bid price of $186,247. Construction is still underway, but has been delayed due to the fact of the rain that created, so if there was maybe the latter part spring before things dry, I don't know if it'll take us back in there. That's a real brief summary of what's happened in the past six months and where we're going in the next six months. I'll take any questions you may have right now.
Just one. They, what did you just, how did this affect our capacity with all the rain we've had in the spring?
Everything in the wastewater treatment plant is built with redundancy, meaning that there's another clarifier over here, so we just had to increase the flow from that clarifier. We get, the extra rain didn't help us any, but we managed to keep up so far.
What week is that to avoid washing?
We can do that, give us the week that we can, that we need to avoid. March 30th through April?
Yes.
The week that you need, the week that we were strongly encouraging you not to wash white clothes.
That's right. Avoid those clothes if it's all possible. If you just can't avoid them, just check the water to make sure.
What week is that?
Sorry?
What week is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. April 30th through, I mean, March 30th through April 3rd. There'd be a budget.
There's no reason to be afraid, but not under the law order.
No.
It's just the fact that we're cleaning those pipes, that's all it really means. Just want to be mindful of washing clothes.
That's right. The water, like I said, if it is second rate, we'll work on that. You got any questions? You can certainly call our office, we'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. I need to make my report within the first 90 days of the year, and so I'm going to take a moment and do our annual mayor's report as of March 2020. Our agenda is very simple, I'll go through. I thought I'd have an overhead, so I do apologize for both sitting there. We have the organizational culture, the environmental and health, safety, and security, gifts and grants and gifts, public meetings, events, path to prosperity, and the journey will be what we'll deal with for this particular portion. First, as obtained to the organizational culture, I've invested some time in understanding some of the roles and responsibility and some functional departments, how do we conduct business? We've been working on building relationships, trust, and collaboration, assessing strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and implementing small incremental changes. We've also invested some time in considering the future state, transactional management, and how to eliminate waste, and trying to work smarter and not harder to create a world-class organization that's providing a world-class service. Next, you see a slide on the environmental, the safety, and the health security. On last year, I had to do it because we were in the first 90 days. I had to make a report in the first 90 days, so some of this will be the things that we actually did last year, but it was, I had to give a report, so I'm covering it again. We assessed and addressed the air quality issues here at our municipal building. We did a maintenance on asbestos tiles and replacement. We replaced the back staircase as it had been a hazard. We installed security cameras. We did a back entrance electronic entry system that is ADA compliant. And we also have done the roof repairs from the water dam. If you look on the next slide, you'll see where we've received multiple grants and gifts over the last year, the Trace Engineering Excellence Award, the Bike and Pedestrian Network. We got the RFBs put up at the Trace, the grand award of airport for airport runway and terminal improvements, the grand award for the airport fuel farm upgrade, also the grand award for municipal airport gas, water, sewage lines. And we're also working with Seneca Hill Solar in an agreement to get solar panels here in collaboration with the county. As for our public meetings on last year, we also had the opportunity to bring in Chief Woody to speak on routine police stops. Health came in and taught on food safety. Our code enforcement did a teaching on nuisance. We had many fire safety trainings, and we partnered with the Arkansas, we partnered with workforce on job fairs and for dislocated workers. We've also had the opportunity to host the Arkansas Democratic Black Caucus Political Outrage to try and get people who are interested in running and understanding more about politics. We had various events over the last year. In March of 2019, we did an amnesty month where we collected $97,871.35, which was $36,000 over the past two-year average, and number 250 warrants served, which was six times the monthly average. For the record, we plan to do that again in the month of April. We celebrated Earth Day to clean yard waste, to receive yard waste and debris for free there at our Camden landfill. And also, we attended the softball, we allowed softball tournament, which was a partnership between us and BNN Paint. And we started to revitalize Collins Park and raise funds also for the Women's Crisis Center. We've also continued to do other collaborations like the job fair with OPEA, June Team, Cabo Washington, and Community Development Institute, which was a third-party assessment that came in to look at Camden and what we can do to become better. We also have been hosting the Path to Prosperity Think Tank. The Southwest Arkansas Planning and Development District has been helping with action and implementation plans to do some of the things that we have been able to accomplish, the physical and environmental challenges, the physical and environmental opportunities, recreational bright spots, and challenges. We've also had the opportunity to work with several new boards, and we've received certificate completions for a few things. Among those, I was elected last year as Arkansas Black Mayor's Association's president. I've also been a graduate of Mid-South Economic Development Course, ADECE, qualified for advanced training towards certified economic developer. As we continue, you'll notice that there's our Christmas photo there. As we continue, you'll see that we've also had the opportunity to read at some of the schools and then to see some of the pictures. We've been at some of the events where people were able to open businesses here. We spent time working with some of the minority and women businesses to help them get kicked off, and of course, you'll see other collaborations as you finish the book. We've done some, we've accepted invitations to groundbreaking, and we've been a strong supporter of First Fridays, and we're looking forward to what's going to happen to our DAF and Fest for the other things that we're doing to build community development as well as economic development. So, thank you for the opportunity to lead this great city, because our future is bright. This is our report for 2019.
Good photo.
I know it is, you too. So, please. Yes, sir. On page two, when you talk about environmental safety and health, security, asbestos here in the industry, is that still going on, getting removed, or is it completed? We're not finished. We have an older building, and I am strongly encouraged that we all need to stay in this building. Several people have inherited some deals as a result of some of the work that we need to get done. So, we've gotten a lot of the front area done. We've replaced a lot. We got the roof fixed. We've stopped the leak. We have a rotation where we're keeping leaks off the building. So, I mean, we've done a lot of things to mitigate it, but we still have some work that we need to do. Yes, sir. For a long time, we were still housing the old, we're still housing some of the things from the court. And so, some of that stuff that had gotten older was still in our building, and so people were sick. So, we have put some, we've done some things to the vents to make sure that the quality in our offices is a little better, but it's an old building, and we've got to do, we have work, we have to stay on it. And we have a rotation on changing out our vents, which is sort of new, and we're grateful to Scott who sets up a tickler to make sure that we're always changed out. Some of the things, if you already have a health challenge, bad air quality only makes it worse. And so, Mr. Green and some of the rest of us who have dealt with some challenges in our body as a result of it have been very aggressive, and he can find one when it comes to breathing, because you know, not breathing is one of the leading causes of death. So, yes, sir. I got one more question. Yes, he, page three of this, Seneca Hill Solar Agreement, remember we passed that? Have we decided on a location? Well, that is a loaded question. So, let's deal with a couple of things there. First of all, when we did this agreement, the county had land, but the city didn't. All right? So, that was the first challenge that we had. The county was able to give some land, we weren't. When we started moving forward, some of you were here for the beastro that happened between the Seneca, Solar, and Entergy. And so, Entergy did a lawsuit, and it had thrown a monkey wrench in the whole thing. So, I went to Little Rock to meet with the commission about two or three Mondays ago, and we're working to try to keep the solar project, but if you look right by the jail on Good Game, that area, the, yes, Judge McDo has already cleaned that, cleaned out, he's wet. And if you look over by the hospital, some of that area has already been cleaned off, and then there's some more land over by OPEA, out of Ben, out of the water treatment plant. So, those were the ability, who had their land. However, for us to have the time, and so that, that kind of added, so there's some nuances that we're going to bring back before you, but we're fighting desperately to get that because if people are driving into Camden, and the first thing they see are those solar panels, it looks like we're progressive or trying to do some things to head toward clean air and things like that. So, yes, we are working on it. However, the lawsuit has slowed some things down. With that lawsuit, we also deal with the fact that some of the monies that would be given to them as incentives have been taken back off the table because of date constraints. So, we'll have to renegotiate, and we'll be back here again to discuss it. It's no way around it. So, you'll hear all about it. Are there any other questions?
I have one on that. On the land use project, how's this transpired? Is there a board for that? I know we're soliciting property, but?
Uh, Judge McDo has been helpful with that, code enforcement before, before I think Travis was helping us to do the acquisition. Have we done an actual board to select it? No, sir. There are only certain places where it would actually naturally be able to go, and so that's what we kind of lean to. I will do a better job of keeping you informed of when we hit some of those snags, though, because some of it is difficult, but we try to fit it into the day-to-day to keep the ball rolling, just to kick the ball down the field. If it's not a legal thing where I have to come back, we've been trying to just keep the ball moving now.
Well, I'm just thinking, with solar panels, I've seen a lot of them going up around the state, there's got to be a criteria of a certain area that's got to be it.
Yes, sir.
And based on what I'm seeing in some areas, I don't see how it meets that criteria.
In Camden?
Well, based on what you was telling me in some of the areas that we're clearing out, and I don't know what the criteria is here.
Well, I don't know how to answer that, except that the area that's here in the hospital, apparently it fits what they need. And the one out by the jail, of course, that looks naturally like it.
Sure. I understand that.
But when you get over by the hospital or some of the other areas, it may look a little hazy, but if they say they can make it work, I'm going, they're going to make an $8 million investment, so I think that they're probably going to know that it's going to work before they make the $8 million investment in Camden and they live somewhere else. And that's, that's not going to cost us, that part will cost us the $8 million they're putting. They're borrowing it, and we're paying back and getting paid back in different ways. Yes, sir. Are there any other questions concerning this? Thank you so much. There is no old business listed on the agenda. Under new business, we have first ordinance 1320, Superior Laws, which our person will introduce, ordinance 1320. Thank you.
Ordinance number 1320, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for security laws and doors for City Hall, waiving the requirements for competitive betting, declaring emergency, and for other purposes. Bidding, not betting, sorry.
Is there a motion? Motion to suspend rules or motion to suspend?
Motion to suspend the rule. What is the nature of the emergency that prepares the patient?
We can do it in discussion if we have a second, if there's a second on that motion.
No second.
No second, now, discussion. It doesn't, I don't know that it has to be fast track, but before, under previous administration, some assessment was done to our building. That was even when people, when people were here, we had the court system and everything. But there was some assessments on the water utilities following through. They have a glass wall and everything. They have a glass wall and everything as a result of the assessment. So it was, under previous administration, it would have been done at that time. However, when I came in, it was obvious that there are some people who have the ability to walk through the building because there's nothing to stop them and some of them, if we're not there to watch them or to see it, we don't know that people are in there. The security system right now is only in my office. I'm the only person with the ability to sit there and see it until we expand that to another area. And I recommend that we start protecting ourselves a little more.
From the public?
From, no, from aggressive public. We serve the public, but there are people in the public who don't always make good decisions. But they don't make good decisions. And as a result of that, I've been walked up on in meetings and people across me, and some people, when they get ready to talk, they're not happy to be. And as a result, sometimes just one buffer helps to slow things down or to prevent ultimately some of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, please, interject.
I'm Scott Atkins, code enforcement officer for the City of Camden. I'm also part of building maintenance and things of the sort. And one of the issues that we've had, and Chief can attest to this as well, sitting in, in our meetings on Monday morning and having to get a call from some of the ladies in our building because we have basically indigent citizens that just literally walk in here and some who are of questionable mill capacity. And so the installation of security doors is going to add that high level of security to the building for our employees so that we don't have to ask for the chief of police to come out of our Monday morning staff meeting to assist with the removal of a citizen. Several times when I've come in and I've found people just literally sitting in our employee break room having coffee with their shoes off. I have escorted them out of the building. And just a little bit more on my background, I, I retired from Marine Corps. Part of what I did was threat vulnerability assessments from the military for various installations to include those that house nuclear weapon systems. So it's something that I honestly can say from a professional perspective that needs to happen. It was a, an instance that was, or an issue that was brought up years ago. I found the old bits, we literally pulled the old bits, they're only good for thirty days. This was right before my time arriving at the city. So it was brought up and addressed in a staff meeting. I asked what we could do to help fast-track this and move this along and ask the mayor's assistance. So from a perspective of what is and what is not safe and what is not secure, it would be a huge benefit to have something like this where we're not trying to keep the public from doing business in the city, we're just trying to make sure that the employees here are absolutely safe.
So there'll be a buzzer system or something at the door? We'll be locking the public out for all intents and purposes until someone allows them access?
Tell them where, tell them where these areas are.
So what, what we've done, the chief of police and I walked through the building and established locations throughout the building that would be safe, or not safe, but adequate to provide protection. So while there is the idea of installing a control system that will allow us to control access to the building, this is just the first stage. This is just getting something out that we can protect. Right now, again, like I said, there's nothing like going into the break room and seeing somebody drinking coffee with their shoes off as those are literally there. So this is just the first stage and there's no contingent of keeping the public from coming to do business. It's just adding an extra layer of security.
My question would be about where on that hall with this?
So if you look down the long hall here and you see the water fountain, the security doors would be put just beyond the water fountain towards the council chamber where we're sitting at now. On the opposite side of the hallway, it would be put as though it was running absolutely parallel with the city clerk's office door. So those are the two.
So then we have open access to the front door, to the water department?
Yes, sir.
And nothing on the other side?
Nothing without, without being granted access to the other side.
And you think that's a good idea? So, I mean, I understand the problem, believe me, I get it.
Yes, sir.
Coming from DFW, I understand indigents and how aggressive they can be.
Some of them are not necessarily indigents. I appreciate him giving them all the credit. Some of them are people who are business people who come in here talking and acting like people who are not business people. And so what I'm suggesting to you is that when we had people all throughout the building, when we had the court, when we had all those people here, somebody would see those people walking around. We don't have that many people left in the building anymore. And it's just not a lot of people inside to, to, to an extra set of eyes. The whole back hall is now gone from us. Nobody's here except, on this hall, the only person left is Mr. Williams, on this whole hall. And people all the way back here already, if I'm in my office or somebody's looking back. And if you want to get by them, you can come in through this way, go through the break room and go all the way down and go down this hall. You don't have to come by those doors, you don't have to walk by those roads right now. And so I'm saying to you, how much I would love to say it was homeless and indigent people. Part of, part of my safety issues is coming from people who have money in their pocket, but they're not using their minds for the right kind of things. They're angry about something and whatever it is, and they're not acting like they should act or talking like they should act.
On that note, knowing people behave that way, you still think it's responsible? Could all our names, phone numbers and addresses on the internet?
Do I think that?
I'm asking.
For public servants, I think, I think it's almost like they would, if, if, well, I know they have mine because I am the mayor. If I were just a local guy, I probably wouldn't want everybody to have my number. But if I'm serving those people, granting them a degree of access is not really a circle for me, people have it.
Then you're not just giving out our phone numbers, you're giving out our addresses, telling everybody on the internet where we live, what our name is and our cell phone number is.
I encourage you that after we get our system, you probably want to get, you want to do the same thing for you. You can't take it back.
Okay. It's out there, it's on the internet.
Yes, sir.
And that gets everything short of our social security number, since somebody would need to steal our identity.
Okay. Can I say something?
Yes, mayor.
Yes, sir. I, personally, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. This seven thousand four hundred forty-four dollar debt, is that a bid that you had to complete this system?
So this is just the first phase, the installation of the doors. There will be some additional calls on to additional security measures that we want, but these were the bids that we have received from.
Yeah, some kind of security lock where they can like, like Chris was talking about buzz in, you can see them and you can help buzz.
Yes, sir.
Release the door.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's why, and we all know that this is nothing new. Under our previous administration, we had people, aggressive people, become. And, uh...
It's part of the job.
Chris, you're talking about the addresses and the phone numbers. They've been Camden news.
Camden news isn't the internet.
I mean, I was just saying, we serve the public, maybe you might get the truth.
Let me ask a question.
He's going to catch him first and I'll come right to you.
So, no, I, I was just going to elaborate on the discussion on the exposure of your name, number. I was getting calls, unwanted calls before my name and number was out there. But I'm okay with it, you know, because I'm here to serve cities, serve my constituents, whatever I can do. I was sharing with him earlier, but my mother told me something, I don't want to do it, I need something else to do.
All right.
Well, I'm trying to think of what, where we are.
Let me catch him first, Mr. Benson, and then I'll come straight to you.
So let me ask you, let's assume we install these doors, a random person comes in and needs to speak with, you know, maybe they need a building permit, they need to come back to you. What is the process that they're going to have to go through to get back to you to conduct that business?
So for right now, we have a number of tentative plans being floated for how that's going to, how that's going to go. There's nothing that's been solidified because there's some, there's a number of ideas as to how that is going to go and making sure that we ensure safety. For, for right now, we're just looking to get the doors installed. When these doors go in, this does not include the magnetic lock, the buzz locks or anything like that. This is the first step. And I want to reiterate that because I think a lot of us are thinking further and further and further ahead. We haven't gotten beyond the first step, which is just adding an additional layer of doors to the building.
So at this point, it would just be more doors like what we have on the outside of the building?
The bits were written, if I'm not mistaken, to match the bronze glazing and everything that looked just like the exterior doors. So when you walk past that first set of exterior doors, if you want to come with the right to conduct city business with the mayor, the city clerk, the code enforcement building inspection's office, you go through one set of doors and look exactly like the ones you just came through. If you want to go and come to the council chamber, you'll come to the left and go through another set of doors.
So at this moment, if we were to approve this, basically, I guess they would be unlocked in the morning and then locked in the evening?
This, right now, if you install these, all you're getting is your standard storefront doors with regular locks, no electromagnetic blocking mechanism put on there.
So people could, people could easily go and conduct their business currently without being obstructed if there was, you know, no one answering or whatever?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Yes, sir.
Well, and so these are not really bronze doors, these are just the bronzed aluminum doors.
So the bronzing is, so if you look at our front doors, we have a reflective door there. The, it's the tining of the actual glass, it's all bronze tining. That is to help with energy efficiency and we talked to a glazing expert and then go into how much it reflects UV lighting and so on and so forth, the temperature of the building.
I'm still a little confused about exactly where these new doors are going to be. I understood your description down here, the water department would not be blocked off with this.
That is correct. And that was intentional because the water department followed through the initial idea and followed through the security procedures. So when you walk into the water department, you can't have access to any of the perks except talking through the glass door or clutching in a key code to get into the door.
So, so let me say, I thought, when, when we brought it, I thought I was bringing it back. I didn't know that some of you would think it was a new idea. This is what was, the research was done on the previous administration and inside...
I don't think they're presenting it, maybe everybody.
I think, I think it was...
The research was done.
It was basically assessment.
And then when, when it was assessed, he followed through, the water department followed through on their assessment. And we were wanting to follow through on our assessment also, and we didn't. And for that reason, we're in the place now where we're having to consider it, is that some people with the... They're not, they're not acting the way we think they're acting. I'm just being honest with you, kidding.
There was a particular incident that occurred as to why all of this came around. And ended up, it were protections and all kinds of things, so it's legit, I can tell you firsthand.
Yes, sir. Can I make a suggestion? I mean, could you, I mean, from what I'm hearing, we're just getting doors, storefront doors.
Yes, sir, that's true.
Can we get something with a bid with intercom system and a magnet? Because if we're talking about security and let's do security, I mean, you know, we just buy the doors.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So I would like to see a bid with some intercom and some magnetic locks. And I think it's a good idea, we have it in our church.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't stop it, it just slows it down. Yes, sir.
Some kind of toast now or in the building?